I can't hear you, Eric.
It's recording.
Yeah, I can't hear Eric though. Eric, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Muted.
Yep.
Okay, you hear me now?
I can hear you now, yep.
Good, we're currently just started recording.
Right, this meeting.
Tony, I have to, you gotta bear with me, I gotta bring twenty something people into this meeting right now.
Oh, that's good.
We can't start the meeting until I bring them in. I wanted to finish our discussion first. So please bear with me. This is gonna take me a few minutes, a minute here to admit.
Well, I'm imposing a two-minute speaking rule.
Admit.
See what I mean, Mary?
I hear you.
See what I meant?
I know, I know. When I heard the number of people, yeah, definitely. I hear you.
Hold on, please bear with me. There's twenty-six people right now in this meeting. There's twenty-eight people in this meeting right now. Okay, I, I know there's a lot of guests out there that wanna speak. Right now, I have you muted. I know you can hear the meeting, so please listen to the chairman and we will get to you with public comment when we get to that point. Tony, you're on.
Okay, you're recording?
We're recording.
This meeting of the City of Kingston Zoning Board of Appeals will now come to order. It is six eleven PM. My name is Tony Arklevich and I will be chairing this proceeding. I will take a moment to explain how the zoning board of appeals functions. The board is comprised of five members and two alternates. We have been appointed to serve the citizens of the city of Kingston. We perform this service to the best of our abilities on a voluntary unpaid basis. The other board members are. Joe Fitzgerald's not here, Brian Cafferty is here, Donna Martin is here, Mary Newbauer, and then we have Ari Goldstein as an alternate. Joe Fitzgerald is absent. So we have four board members present. This is a virtual meeting. Zoning Enforcement Officer Eric Kitchen is at the controls. There will be a period for public comment this evening after each variance request has been presented. This period is an opportunity for individuals to make a statement of opinion, not to engage in debate. Each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Speakers, applicants, and attorneys must be brief and to the point to allow everyone a chance to speak. Speakers must address the board as a whole, not individual members and not other speakers or audience members. Professional demeanor is expected. Okay, first order of business is to approve the minutes for the February eleventh, two thousand twenty-one meeting, a motion, please.
I'm making a motion.
Mary's motion, second.
A second.
Donna Martin, second, all in favor? I.
I.
Opposed, approved for zero. We have another housekeeping chore to do. I'm gonna need a motion to amend the twelve-ten-two thousand twenty findings of facts signature sheet listing one forty-two Pearl Street. Motion as a use variance instead of an area variance. I noticed when I was preparing for the meeting this evening that it was, the motion went in as a use variance, not an area variance, so I need a motion to amend that facts, findings of facts signature sheet. Motion, please.
A motion.
Everyone know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Second. Second. Somebody?
I'll second.
Brian's second, all in favor? I. Opposed. Okay, so we just had to do that house cleaning and Eric, I'll come down and initial that change from a use variance to an area variance. Okay, Eric, it needs to do some chores right now, getting all these people listed as to what they wanna speak about and what their name and address is, so this is gonna take a little while.
Yes, it is.
All twenty-some people are gonna speak.
Rob Hicks, could you please unmute yourself?
Sure, yep, I'm here.
Robert, who's here also to speak on your behalf?
It's just me.
No, there was somebody that showed up as a guest of Rob Hicks.
I don't think so. Maybe, maybe I tried to dial back in.
Yeah, okay, so, Rob, hold on. I have to unmute all our dial-in callers. All dial-in callers, if you'd like to speak in reference to ninety-five Emerson Street, you have to unmute yourself. Hold on, Tony, bear with me. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on behalf of Emerson Street? Please unmute yourself.
So is it anyone aside from me then, Eric?
Hold on, Rob, I'm trying. I wanna go through this list. Kimberly Scott, are you here as far as Emerson Street?
No, he's just here.
Kimberly Scott?
Oh, I thought it was.
Maradee B., are you here?
Not for Emerson Street.
Okay, Rachel Weiss, are you here for Emerson Street?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Eric?
Hold on.
I think they can all hear you, so to go through every one of them.
Right, right.
He needs their names for the record.
I have names and phone numbers. Luciana, are you here to speak on Emerson?
No.
Okay. Kimberly Scott, are you here to speak on Emerson Street? Okay, last call. Anybody here to speak on Emerson?
I received a letter about Emerson Street. I don't have anything negative to say about the plans. I just received a letter, so I decided to attend.
Okay, who's this?
This is Chris McIntosh from ninety-six Johnston.
Okay, Chris, would you like to speak?
I don't have anything to say about the matter. I was just attending, facing the letter I received.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, so it appears to me that Rob Hicks is here to present his case. Rob, unmute yourself. Introduce yourself to the board.
Sure. Hi, my name is Rob Hicks. I live at ninety-five Emerson Street. We are seeking to.
Let me just, hold on, please. Okay, first item on the agenda is Robert Hicks, ninety-five Emerson Street, Zone R1, Ward 1. The applicant is seeking an area variance from four oh five dash eight, attachment two. The applicant is seeking to construct a single-story, one-car detached garage from the allowed five-foot side yard to one-foot side yard setback from the property line. I wanna enter into the record a letter received by Mr. Kitchen from.
One second, Tony. I just said two more people enter. The two people that just signed on. Phone number three-three-nine-four-one-six-nine. Are you here to speak on Emerson Street? Barbara Cohen, are you here to speak on Emerson Street?
No, something else, thank you.
Okay, mute yourself. Thank you, we'll get to you.
Okay, so we've gotta get some mutes, getting feedback here. Please, Eric, we're getting feedback.
I know, Tony. Okay, I found the problem. Gotcha, move on, we're good.
All right, I wanna enter into the record a letter received by Mr. Kitchen. From Paul Brennan, neighbor of Robert Hicks of ninety-five Emerson Street, supporting the construction of a one-car detached garage from the allowed setbacks. We'll enter that into the record. Okay, Mr. Hicks, can you give us a little brief explanation as to what you're proposing to do in terms of garage?
Sure, so it's gonna be a fourteen-by-twenty-four-foot garage and we're just looking to retain as much of the useful backyard space as possible, so gaining that extra four feet from the five foot to the one foot will give us ninety-six square feet of usable yard. That's the main reason we're asking for the variance. We're just trying to make the most of the yard space that we have.
Okay, I did have a chance to drive by. I do wanna mention Paul Brennan is supporting the construction of garage. He's just concerned about a footing drain that may be impacted and would want that replaced. I'm sure that you have no problem doing that if you construct a garage?
Absolutely.
Okay, I took a ride, I believe it was Saturday morning, by the property and I noticed most of the garages in that area of Emerson Street are very close to the prop side property lines. Very few of them are the required set five-foot setback. So basically, you're gonna be doing what many of the people in that area in that neighborhood have done already. Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, board members, we have any questions?
Clarification?
Who's this, Brian?
Brian, yeah.
Okay.
Point of clarification, just to make sure I've got the right house. This is basically what looks like a white.
Yes, yes.
Correct. Correct. Right, okay. Thank you.
The driveway goes to the right-hand side as you look at it and right near the property line where the.
Some tall spruce is in the backyard?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Great, thank you.
Rob, 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 we have roosters in the backyard?
No, it's a spruce, a blue spruce.
Okay.
Roosters on your mind there.
There's chickens and roosters running all over the place.
So, any other questions for Robert about this garage?
I do. Robert, the map that I see on the application, was that drawn by a surveyor?
So it's, it was based on our survey map that we got from the seller, Geo, and I worked with my brother-in-law, who's an engineer, to add the structure. And so, yeah, it was done by an engineer, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? If not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're only, we're talking about a difference of four feet, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, and I'm presuming, I, Tony, you had mentioned that, you know, the gentleman's gonna be installing a perimeter drain.
No, there's an existing drain on the boundary that he's concerned may be altered and I would put that in the, I'm way ahead of you, Brian. And in the motion to approve, I would put a condition that any footing drain needs to be replaced.
And I'm assuming because it's so close to the property line, you're planning, the applicant's planning on putting gutters on that, that side of the roof because I believe the roof pit, it's a, it's a gable roof. And if I'm not mistaken, it runs in both directions, correct?
Yes, both sides will have gutters.
Okay, great.
Okay, okay, so. I'm sorry, yes.
I just like to weigh in, if I might.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
It's the position of building safety that, you know, we're not kinda getting the habit of allowing variances to put garages or other structures this close to the property lines. Just because in, for future maintenance, right now, the neighbor may agree to allow this to be put that close, but if the neighbors change or anything and something happens with the structure and maintenance needs to happen, then that, that maintenance would need to occur with people standing on the neighbor's property. And, you know, we do have issues with that currently and, and sometimes they end up in legal battles and stuff, but, you know, it's my position that we shouldn't be allowing stuff when it's possible for the structure to be moved, to comply, we shouldn't be allowing.
You mean to put it back further in the backyard?
Right, or, I mean, at least off the property line. I think, you know, if there's space for compliance, then, you know, it's our, our opinion that it should meet.
Didn't we give that variance? Isn't that what that was all about up there on Lincoln Court or whatever it is?
What? We, we, we did grant that. Not necessarily what, you know, what I would have done, but, you know, I, I thought I just needed to weigh in on, on that because we, we do get a lot of issues where people need to repair their property and the neighbor isn't willing to allow them to go onto their property to do that.
Yeah, so.
Yep.
So to speak to that issue, you know, I've had my own problems with this exact issue. You know, it, it got, it got worked out, but it, you know, it could have, it could have very well ended up, you know, and snared in, in the courts and there, there have been several instances because of the confined nature of our city buildings and houses that, where you have that kind of setback reduced to literally, you know, literally one foot, you know, I don't even know, I mean, are these, are the overhangs, are the overhangs on the building going to, you know, extend over the line into the neighbor's yard? I mean, but my, but Steve's point is very well taken. It's always good when you have a friendly neighbor, but if you don't have a friendly neighbor maintaining the house, even just a simple thing as painting the building, you know, in, or servicing the gutters or whatever, whatever the case may be, becomes really challenging if you have a neighbor that's not cooperative.
Yeah, but Brian, as I said, had taken a ride by there, I would say ninety percent of the garages are on the property line.
Yeah, I have one that's on the property line, just one street over. I mean, not, yeah, basically a block over on Washington Avenue, it's the same thing, you know.
All right.
Right on the property line.
We need to vote on it. We heard Steve, thank you, Steve, for your, for your input on that, but we need, we have a motion to approve an area variance from four oh five dash eight, attachment two to construct a single-story, one-car detached garage from the allowed five-foot side yard setback to one-foot side setback from the property line with the condition that any displaced footing drain be replaced. Okay, I'm gonna take a roll call. Brian?
Well, I have. I have a, is, I mean, is it possible, I mean, does it have to be one foot from the property line? I mean, is there enough to create a service corridor? I mean, could you have three feet?
Oh. We physically could, it's just moving it towards the center of the backyard.
Right, you under, you understand that it becomes really challenging to service that side of the building if you go to one, one foot?
Yes, understand.
Okay, Brian, we need a yes or no on the motion.
Well, on the, okay, you seem to be in a hurry, Tony, tonight.
I'm not in a hurry, but we can move on the, on the motion.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going to, I'm gonna vote no in this iteration.
Donna?
I tend to go with Brian. I feel there's a sufficient room for him to move that so that he wouldn't be so close to that property line.
Okay, Mary?
I agree with Brian and Donna, yeah. I vote no, same thing.
Okay, with the input from Steve, I was prepared to vote yes on this, but with the input from Steve, I'll be voting no also, so motion is defeated, zero to four. Mr. Hicks, you're gonna need to look at your setting there and come up with some additional ideas of what you're gonna do.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hicks.
Thanks.
All right. Next, number two, Joseph and Michael Frasca.
All right, Tony, I gotta speak for a second. I did have a, I just had a, a letter come in from a neighbor on Hunter Street which at this late hour, it's too late to read, but should I read it into the record?
Read it into the record, not the letter, just the name and whether they're for or against the, the application, please.
The letter is from Larry Quick Jr.
To you, just like it sounds quick.
Larry, yep, Larry Quick Jr., sounds like quick, it is quick. Owns the property loaded, located at one twenty-seven, one twenty-nine Hunter Street. Owned it for many years. He says his tenants have no, it's hard for his tenants to park now.
Okay.
He's not.
Or against it?
He's against granting the variance.
Against the variance. All right, just keep it in the file.
And there, now we have to see who else is here to speak.
What can we do? Can we do the application first?
Yep.
And then we'll have people speak. All right, thank you. Okay, Joseph and Michael Frasca, one twenty-five Hunter Street, Zone RT, Ward Eight. The applicant is seeking an area variance from chapter four oh five dash thirty-four J, parentheses one, to park four vehicles on the street. Who's here? Joseph and Michael are here?
Just Joseph is here.
Hi, Joseph.
Hello.
I did drive by Saturday morning, I think, believe I met your father.
Okay.
Worked in and spoke with him a little bit. Can you give us a brief explanation of what's going on with the house?
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry, say that hard again?
I said, it looks like a lot of work is going on with the house from what I saw, so.
Yeah, yeah, so if I, if I remember correctly, I believe the house has been vacant since two thousand and nine. It's currently gutted and so there's a two-family on the property now and we're, we have a building permit to rent and we're currently renovating that now. And then, so that parking is okay. What we're thinking and planning to do is building an addition in the back to add a unit, and so for that, we'll need some additional parking. And the parking is, is, it's challenging because the building is set back about ninety-two feet from the front of the lot. And so it creates not too much parking in the back of the lot where, so I think we can get about two cars in the back of the lot.
So right now, as I understand it, you have two apartments, two, each one is a two-bedroom, so requires two parking spots. One of the apartments has two spots on the property and you currently are parking two cars on the street which by virtue of applying now for this additional parking, you lose the rights of the pre-existing for the two that you have on the street. So you have two there that you currently have an apartment and two for the new apartment, for a total of four on the street. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. Two on the lot and then four on the street, so that's six.
But you have two that you're doing on the street already for your apartment, an existing apartment.
Right, well, we, I mean, no one's lived there yet.
Okay, all right, okay, but, so you need four on the street. I noticed that that house is set back quite a bit. You've got a lot of room in the front. Don't you have some room in there to put some parking area?
Well, we were talking with Sue Cahill and then the Planning and Historic and Heritage boards, I, I believe they don't allow parking in the front of the building.
In the heritage area, area. Under the Heritage Area Commission.
Should be able to park in the driveway. I mean, there is.
Someone's already there, parking in the driveway.
Well, I think the, the, what the issue that they were saying with the driveway, it's, it's just a long, narrow driveway, so if someone parked in, in it, it would block, it would block access.
So you're saying the Historic Area Commission would not allow you to put any parking spaces in the front of the house?
I think, if I remember correctly, I'd have to look at my notes, but I believe it was, I think it was, we, I was talking with Sue Cahill at the Planning Department about the not parking in the front.
Because of the heritage area?
I have, I assume so, but I can't say for sure that was the reason.
Okay, just you had a lot of room there, so I thought.
Yeah, yeah, I know, we were originally.
But I, I did notice, I went Saturday morning, I like to go Saturday morning for parking variances because people aren't working and that's when the street's gonna be the crowdedest and most crowded on the street and there weren't many spots available. That didn't appear to be a problem, but it is four vehicles. Any questions from the board, please?
Well, can we get proof or something about what he's talking about where he was told by the Heritage Committee that he can?
Yeah, I've been in touch with Sue and me and Sue, Sue had told me, you know, you can't have a parking lot in front of your house. Is that what, Mr. Frasca?
Any house or that house?
Mr. Frasca?
Yes.
You please tell me what the conversation, what you had with Sue's.
Yeah, I believe it was, it was something along that lines, like you can't, you can't have parking that way in the front of the, in the front house.
That's correct, Tony. There.
The heritage area or any?
It's a zoning issue, Tony. It's in the zoning code. On a case-by-case basis, I had a woman down on Third Avenue who was not allowed to park in her front lawn and she had to get a special letter from zoning years ago because she has a handicapped son to allow the handicapped van to park, have parking in front of the house. In a driveway, she had a paved driveway in front of her house.
Yeah.
Well, I park in the front of my house in the driveway.
Yeah, me too.
I guess I'm not supposed to.
It splits the yard.
I'll be facetious, I'll be facetious. Any questions for the applicant from the board?
No, but, but there is some people here to speak on this.
There is, okay, thank you. There wasn't anybody to speak on that first one, right, Eric?
Correct. Before we go to the, to the public, I just have a couple of questions. So, I get the, I get the issue of not having a parking lot per se in the front yard, makes total sense. It, you know, again, we're in, we're in an old city, so there's a variety of different parking situations.
Yes.
But, but I get that, I get that they don't want lots in front of houses, not, not, not good urban planning, but I gather there's not a, there's less space behind the house. Is that where currently, currently cars are parking in the back of the house?
Where are the two cars parking? Well, there's nobody, there's nobody in the house.
Correct, yeah, the house is vacant.
Well, how was it used in the? Well, how was it used in the past, do you know?
I'm, I'm not, I don't know. Uh, we, we purchased the house within the last six, three to six months.
Okay, is there, is, is, does the driveway go back behind the house? Can you park behind it?
Uh, not currently. The driveway, um, ends at the, it, it runs on the east side of the property and it goes, ends at the end of the building.
At the end of the building, okay, so basically the backyard is a backyard. Um, and it's a two-family house, it was a two-family house when you purchased it?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Um, and there's an existing non-conforming use? And you want to put four, basically you're now, because of the ch, change you're proposing, you've got to go to four on the street. Um, do you, do you have an idea of how many spaces are available as far as on-street parking on the street?
Um, like number-wise or just in general?
Yeah, in number-wise, like how many, um, you know, how many cars can park on that block? I know it, I know those streets are very narrow down there, so.
Hunter. I, I mean, I would have to guess, uh, I'm, I, I can't really say for sure, but I'm just.
When I went by on Saturday morning, there were at least five to ten spots on the block available on both sides. It's both sides parking.
There's parking on both sides and enough for two-way traffic?
Yeah.
Okay.
Try going up and down First Avenue.
Well, Hunter, if I were, I, I'm, I'm familiar with Hunter, I was just there the other day. It's very narrow, that street. Um, and the, I guess it's, you know, I mean, the issues, the issue's never so much a problem during the temperate months, but it's when winter comes is when.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and you got alternate side of the street parking. And Hunter's got a very, is that, is that on the hill? Is that area?
Yeah, there's, it's, there's some hill there.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the, the building is on the, the flat part, like the, that's still the flat part.
Okay.
Of Hunter Street.
All right. Uh, that's, that's, that's all I need, that's all the questions I had.
Um, I have a question.
Donna, go ahead.
Um, you intend on adding on to the back of the house, how much, uh, space are you looking to use?
Uh, it depends, we're working with the, um, the planning and historic and heritage departments on this. Um, potentially it would be, uh, a six hundred square foot addition in the back. But that, it kind of depends, so. Yeah.
You extend the cars to go to the back lot? And have them park, you know, perpendicular so that they can all back out and go out the front driveway?
It's a new.
We were, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
We were, we were, we had been talking with Sue, um, and Eric and kind of drawing some diagrams. Um, and it, it was, we were, they were unsure, we were unsure whether two or three cars would fit based on the, like, dimensions that, and, um, those kind of things that they, they recommended, so we were doing two, um, um, in behind the house and four from the street for that reason.
Okay, any other questions? You need four spots on the street, that's the bottom line, the board has to decide.
So the two behind the house are gonna require tree removal, I'm assuming?
Uh, no, there are no trees in the, in the backyard.
Where are the two going that are on?
Trees in the backyard, at least from the aerial, anyway.
They're gonna go in the back, there's two on, on site that you're gonna provide are gonna go in the back of the house?
Yeah, yeah.
And there's no trees that have to come down?
Uh, not that I remember. I, I was there a few weeks ago. I would have to double-check with my father.
Pretty sure that you're gonna be able to get the two in the back of the house?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Or else you'll be coming back for two more spots on the street. Okay, any other questions from the board? All right, we have a motion.
Uh, Tony, we have some people that want to speak on this.
I'm sorry, thank you, I, that's what I wanted you to do. Yep, go ahead.
Uh, we have Mr. Will Ferry here. Will, are you here?
Hi, how you doing? Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, Will.
Hi, so I am the owner and occupant of one nineteen hundred, the property that is adjacent to Mr. Frasca's property.
Hey, Will.
Hi. I would, uh, like to make an amendment to a statement. The driveway does connect all the way to the back to German Street where there is an additional lot in the back. Both my property and Mr. Frasca's property are forty-foot wide by two hundred feet deep. And at the back of our properties, there is a property that abuts German Street that is owned, I believe, by the bus company, but don't quote me on that. The driveway cuts all the way through by sectioning a lot.
Are you saying that there's room to park back there? Is that what your point is?
I believe there is room to park back there, uh, personally.
How many cars?
Uh, anywhere between three to four, depending on how, the make of the car and how tight they park.
And who owns the property?
Um, that, the back property, I don't know. I believe it is owned by Ethan Allen Bus Company.
But how, how are they gonna be allowed, how will they be allowed to park on there if it's not his property?
No, I'm not referring to the bus company's property, I'm referring to Mr. Frasca's property directly, directly behind the house.
Well.
I think the.
Portion of the backyard area.
Okay, thank you, we're gonna ask some more questions on the basis of that. Thank you, sir. Does anyone else want to speak, Eric, on this?
Is there anybody out there that would like to speak in reference to one twenty-five Hunter Street? Please unmute yourselves and speak now.
Um, my name's Mairead Briggs. I live at one nineteen hundred Street, and I'd also like to speak in opposition.
Well, I'm not sure the first applicant was, was in opposition, but, um, go ahead, if you're in opposition, that's fine.
Yes, I am. So, um, while you have gone down the road and on Saturday, perhaps there were a lot of cars, um, there was mention of how difficult it is in the winter to park, and with the snow removal, it's already very difficult to get our cars from one side of the street to the other. And so that's a very big concern for me, including, uh, I mean, anything with public works, trash removal will be more difficult. Um, we don't have a driveway, so the street parking is actually a necessity. Um, and I guess that's it, uh, it's concerning that the congestion will be there.
Thank you for your comments, well spoken, thank you. Anyone else, Eric?
Uh, Mr. Ferry, any final comments?
I did want to mention that I am in opposition to this, and I, nothing against you, Mr. Frasca, but this would definitely cause undue hardship on the tenants of both my property, Mr. Frasca's property and one twenty-five, one twenty-seven. Um, one thirty-four, I know that property is not directly adjacent, but their parking lot spills onto the street causing further undue hardship on all of Hunter.
Okay, thank you. Um.
I'm gonna ask for a last call, is there anybody else that would like to speak on one twenty-five Hunter? Please speak now. Uh, hold on, Tony, I have somebody that's looking to come into the meeting.
Well, not for one twenty-five necessarily.
No, anybody else up for one twenty-five? Hold on, hold on, Bill is entering the room, admit, Bill.
All right, this, this is getting a little cumbersome.
Bill, Bill, are you here to speak on one twenty-five Hunter Street?
All right.
Move forward, Tony.
I'm, I'm here to speak on one twenty-five.
Okay, Bill.
Okay, what's the name and address?
My name is Brian Hale. I am also at one nineteen Hunter.
Okay.
Um, just repeating what has already been said, the road is actually quite congested parking-wise most of the time. Uh, an additional four cars would on most days be quite difficult to find parking.
Well, right now, he has two. At one point, there were two cars parking on the street of people who lived in that house. That's a pre-existing non-conforming condition. There were two on-site, isn't that accurate, Mr. Frasca?
Say that again?
People who lived in that house previously in the apartments, two of them parked on the street, is my understanding. And two parked on-site?
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would have to imagine, I, but I'm not sure. I, I think the house has been vacant since two thousand and nine.
Some people are speaking, are res, sound like they've been residents a while. We had two apartments in there, two, two-bedroom apartments, there were four, allowed four cars. I don't know what the story was, but at this point, um, Eric, have you, have you visited the site, Eric?
Correct, I've gone past the site, I've had many conversations with Mr. Frasca and his father.
Have you been in the back of the house?
I drove past the back of the house. There is another lot behind the house that does not belong to the Frascas, which borders German Street. Um, so, um, I'm not a surveyor.
Yeah, no, I'm just wondering if they're talking about this lot that, Mr. Frasca, do you own a lot back there or don't you? I mean, they're saying.
No, we, we don't. I believe it, it belonged, uh, it, I don't think it belonged, we checked it, I don't, I'm not sure it belongs to Ethan Allen. I believe it belongs to a private individual.
Yes, it does not belong to Ethan Allen, it belongs to a private individual. Um, I'm fully aware of the individual that owns that property. And, um, the Fras, th- they have a deep lot, but a lot of their frontage is in the front of the home.
Right, yeah, I saw that. It's, it's your, uh, opinion, this lot that people are talking about in the public comment is, are not, is, is not available for Mr. Frasca's tenants to park there.
That, Anthony, that is correct. I never suggested that a lot was available for the Frascas. I was referring to their portion of the backyard directly behind the home at one twenty-five.
You feel that that's big enough, okay. I, I think we need, uh, a visit, Eric, there, and you determine whether there's room in the back for any cars to park. And that could reduce the four down to two or whatever, if two more could park there. But don't forget, two are gonna park on-site, that's a given. So you need, how many of the four can park back there? So my, my recommendation would be to table this until Mr. Kitchen can visit and make a determination of how many additional cars can park on-site.
So Joseph, can you please call me tomorrow morning?
Wait, we gotta vote on that, Eric. I, I'm just, made the motion.
Right.
Motion to table.
All right, I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second.
Okay, hold on, Brian. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Most. Okay, we're gonna table this, Mr. Frasca, and then Mr. Kitchen is gonna come down do analysis and see how many cars can park on-site, and then we'll bring it back.
Joseph.
Okay, yeah.
You have a survey for this property?
Yes.
Okay, call me tomorrow morning here at the office, we'll make arrangements, set up an appointment where I can meet you on-site, we can review this, then we'll bring you back for next month.
Okay, sounds good. And also, um, a note to our, our neighbors, uh, you're wel, welcome to stop by when my dad is there, Mike Frasca, doing work, we'd love to meet you guys. Uh, I think we tried to reach out to the owner, but anyway, anyway, we'd love to meet.
Thank you for your input. Good luck.
Appreciate it. I, I've tried reaching out myself and have been unsuccessful.
Okay, let's, let's.
Okay.
Go move on.
All right, so Tony, I'm gonna ask everybody who's not here for one forty-two Pearl Street to please leave the meeting.
I have a feeling that the bulk of those twenty-some people, as you just said, we only had a couple, maybe three or four.
Tony, I'm gonna ask you for a, a thirty-second break, quick, if we could.
I, I, I'll agree to that.
I appreciate, I just have to leave the computer for a quick second, I'll be right back.
I'm gonna leave the computer for a quick second, oh, this has been quite a meeting.
Is this a bio break?
This is a bio break, yes.
Jesus, this application for.
Brian, you haven't commented, that my halo is missing.
I see that.
I'm no longer an angel.
I see that.
Uh, Brian. Uh, okay, where is he? Ah, there he comes. All right, I gotta call Ari to come to the meeting now. Hold on. Hello, Ari, can you join us now? Uh, you, you dial it, you can, you can either use the link from Eric's May eighth email, or you can use the phone to dial in. What are you gonna do? Okay, we'll see in a few minutes, and thanks, Ari, bye.
So, Tony? Tony?
Eric, yes.
While we're waiting for Ari, can I just, uh, tell the people that are here at the meeting how we should move forward with public comment, uh, while we're waiting?
Well, I'm gonna first, can I just interject? I'm gonna put a two-minute timeline on all comments when we've got twenty-some people. And, um, it's gonna be a two-minute timeline, so comments need to be brief and succinct. Cause, uh, we're not gonna have long-winded, um, comments.
Uh, excuse me, Tony?
Yes.
Have we tried, um, contacting Mr. Fitzgerald again?
Mr. Fitzgerald is in the unknown, I will try again, but Ari's calling in, he's.
No, I know, but let's just give, let's just give Joe one more shot also.
I will.
Just to confirm.
I'm here.
You're here, Ari?
I'm here.
Thank you, Ari.
Thank you for joining us.
Good thing.
I need to speak, Tony, if I could, when you get a chance.
Really appreciate it, Ari. This item has to have five board members.
No problem.
And given Ari's joining us, I wanna expedite this also, because he's using time that he
Yep.
had planned for others, so he doing this a favor. Joe is not.
Happy to be here.
Joe's not available, I'm not gonna keep calling, that's it. All right.
I gotta, I, I need to, I need to speak. Uh, so there's a lot of people participating in this meeting right now. And approximately, there's eighteen people. Some people have names on my screen, some people just have phone numbers. I am gonna go through the people that I see first. And then the people that have their names on here. And then we're gonna go by people's phone numbers, so if you hear me call your phone number, unmute yourself. Or if you hear me call your name, unmute yourself. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, we have, uh, Misha Corbin and Janice Anderson, who is representing Mr. Misha Corbin, um, on the next agenda item.
Just, just Misha is here, not Amy?
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, Misha's here and his attorney, Ms. Janice Anderson, is here.
What about Amy?
No, she's not present, unfortunately.
You're smart, okay. All right, um, we're now, our move to our next and last agenda item, one forty-two Pearl Street. Ward three, zone R one, SPL zero five six point nine zero dash five dash two zero. Further proceedings in reference to one forty-two Pearl Street, just a short description of what we have, we have a, um, reconsideration of a vote that was taken on twelfth. of a vote that was taken on twelve ten, two thousand twenty that resulted in what's called a default denial where there were three board members present, two voted in favor of the area variance for the six-foot-high fence in the front and one opposed, by virtue of one opposed, it was not three zero. And whenever you have only three board members in a quorum present, it needs to be unanimous vote for a motion to be passed. The um question is, again, is a reconsideration with the full board in attendance and the application reconsidered, we have a letter I'm reading from, from Mr. Gardenstein to Ms. Anderson. I'll read one sentence, I concur that pursuant to the provisions of the general city law, the application, if amended, can be subject to a revote without being subject to the rehearing process. The rehearing process would necessitate all board members unanimously approve a rehearing. I wanna emphasize the application, if amended, can be subject to a revote. So I'm anxious because I did, we all received paperwork from the attorney um, Ms. Anderson and um, I was a little hard pressed to see where the application had been amended. I know you're submitting uh, a brief for the purpose and um, you're reviewing the area variance criteria and how it positively applies to this property and the fence and why it should be granted. Quite frankly, as chairperson, I'd be more interested in hearing where the application has been amended and how we can proceed with a positive board vote on this um, due to a compromise of considerations. I really, excuse me, uh, actually with twenty people in the audience ready to speak, I will have to insist that we have a two-minute timeline on the public participation. But I was not prepared to see an oral, a written argument, oral argument on the criteria of area variances related to the six-foot-high fence in the front. I was really wondering where the application would be amended so that this could be reconsidered and not have a rehearing. By you listing all the arguments for this area variance, we're really having a rehearing.
Well, I'd be happy to, first of all, the, what you need an amendment of is not the actual application, but the motion. So by adding any um.
I'm just reading Mr. Gardenstein's letter to you.
I mean, Mr. Gardenstein, I'm sure you would agree, Dan, that if you look at the code, the requirement is that the motion there'll be an amended motion and by just adding a condition to the motion, which we're proposing the condition be the landscaping, that that would be, that you require it, that that would be the agreement to the motion.
Okay, uh, the letter said application, if it's the motion, then we'll consider an amendment to the motion and what I'm hearing from you is the amendment to the motion is that uh, approval to grant an area variance uh, for this uh, six-foot-high fence by putting ivy and roses on the fence.
Some other form of landscaping, correct?
Okay.
And we would like to make, I mean, and as I understand it, Mr., because we're opening it to a public hearing, you are basic, in public comment, you're basically having a rehearing. So, I mean, we would like to, we have a presentation that we would like to do, which they were, I don't think.
What is, what is the question? What does the presentation entail?
We have some slides that we would like to show you, um, some pictures of the property.
Okay.
So I'm prepared to make Ms. Anderson a co-host, which will enable her to show the board her slide presentation, Tony, with your permission.
I, I, I appreciate that, Eric, but I'm still having some of my questions answered from Ms. Anderson because I was approaching this meeting with a different opinion as to what we were doing.
Understood.
And considering that I was the no-vote that put this into default denial, I, I would like to hear uh, some compromise and I would like to hear some changes that in the motion that will allow us to proceed with this without having to go to further litigation.
Understood.
There's no litigation here right now at all, I'm just here to help and give advice to Misha and.
Potential litigation, potential litigation. So what we're doing is we're gonna have some slides of the fence and some descriptions in support of the motion amendment. I just wanna be sure of this, where we're headed.
Yeah, yeah, so essentially we'd like to basically tell the story of what they'd like to do and give you some photographic evidence of why the variance is necessary and have some discussion about it, which I think was a little bit, was absent last time so that they can just basically present their full story and.
And there was, what do you mean it was absent, discussion was absent, we had quite a lengthy discussion with the party.
Yeah, well, the board didn't have a lengthy discussion, the public had a lengthy discussion.
Well, I discussed it. I commented, so alright, so Eric, you know how to do this there with slides and all this and that?
I've spoken to IT and I'm prepared to make Ms. Anderson a co-host.
Okay, I just wanna um, make sure, Ms. Anderson, did I adequately summarize the default denial and what happened at the previous board meeting and what we were striving to do, are you satisfied with my summary of that?
Yes, essentially there wasn't a majority vote and you need a majority vote of the entire board.
Alright, good, I like to try to be accurate, so when I have the attorney agree with me, I appreciate it, so.
Anthony?
Yes.
So, I was not at the last meeting, um, so, uh, I just, and, and maybe Dan can clarify this or, or you can, but, um, so. I mean, are we rehearing this?
No, I am not, I am in, I am in a mode right now. I am not calling this a rehearing, Corporation Council said, without being subject to the rehearing process, I am not considering this a rehearing, I'm considering it, I'll vent the word, a reconsideration since there were only three board members present, that this motion was denied by default denial, which is not an ideal way of making any kind of decision, I would readily tell you that. And I was the no-vote that put it into default denial, but I'm ready to hear some alternatives, hear some suggestions, hear some compromise that we can move this along, but I'm not calling this a rehearing, not when Corporation Council in a letter to Ms. Anderson says, without being subject to the rehearing process. Because I'm gonna say this, if it's re, gonna be subject to the rehearing process, the rehearing process requires a unanimous vote of the board to have a rehearing. And me being the negative vote, I'm not so sure you wanna have a rehearing because a rehearing will require all board members to vote affirmatively to have it. So there is some method to my madness, I'd like to proceed to hear how this application and this motion is gonna be amended and go from there, then we'll, then I'll ask the board for their opinions and maybe their suggestions, but I'd like to consider this an open dialogue.
Okay, so my question, my question then is, what, being I wasn't at the
Yes.
Last hearing, or anybody who wasn't, just not me, but uh, you know, what is our status here, I mean?
Well, the status is we're in a reconsideration of a default denial for a variance for the front of this fence that it currently stands at six feet, it would need a variance from the four feet allowable and that motion to allow a six-foot fence in the front of the yard was defeated by a default denial. But now it's going to be reconsidered by an amended motion, hopefully, we're gonna hear the conditions of the amended motion from Ms. Anderson and uh, Mr. Corbin. So let's just.
Just hold on one second, in order, whatever we call it, whether we call it a rehearing or a reconsideration, the bottom line is that um, the application has to be fully represented because we have people, board members who are voting, who are not present before. So in essence, this is a de novo presentation of the application that was considered um, previously and denied, uh, Mr. Cafferty and um.
Ari.
Cannot adequately consider the application without having the opportunity to hear, you know, the information from the beginning. So when I say without um, it, you know, without the sentence that, that uh, you know, Tony repeated, I was referring to um, the requirement that there be um, a unanimous vote of the board in order um, to move forward and that is what is not applicable here for a number of reasons. This is basically a de novo hearing in front of a full board, two of whom, two of our board members having not been present last time. So we have to start again.
Okay, well, I don't think, you know, it was that involved of a presentation to begin with, so let's try not to make it involved now, alright, so we're gonna do a slideshow? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Anderson, are you prepared to make your presentation, I'm gonna, can I make you a co-host?
Okay, and can you un, and Misha, can you unmute yourself or does, do you have to do that, Eric? Okay.
So just to be clear, Dan, uh, we're, we're not, the two people who weren't present at the original hearing of this can't vote on this?
No, you're gonna vote, that's why we needed five people here, that's why I called Ari to come, we need five people.
Actually, just for clarification, I believe it's three people who were not present for the first go-around because I believe this morning wasn't on the board yet.
No, but of the people here tonight, so there's three people that have not heard this, okay.
Alright.
So let's go. Let's get going, we got twenty people who wanna speak too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Ms. Anderson, I've made you a co-host, so please share your screen, start your presentation.
Okay, give me one second. Okay, so Misha and Amy, Misha Corbin and Amy Seberger purchased this home. They've done a lot there and their goal with this application, so they have um, their property, their house is perpendicular to the uh, street line. So it's a little bit different than most houses. Um, and their goal is to create a private space in their yard, in their yard that they can use. Uh, they have a secondary goal of trying to keep the deer out that, but that is very much secondary, okay? And the uh, I'm gonna let Misha show you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna control the slides, but Misha's gonna walk you through basically, you know, what they've done with the property since they got it. Uh, issues with the property that require, that, that make this variance necessary and their attempts to address it and the vision they have um, to address it in a way that they think will be beautiful and will enhance the neighborhood. And Misha, I'm gonna let you kind of tell me when you want me to change slides.
Thanks, Janice, uh, and thank you for the board to let me present this. Um, as you see, when we, this is how the property looked when we first bought the house. Um, a lot of the yard was torn up and generally was in a bit of disarray and we didn't think it met the high standards and, you know, the atmosphere of the neighborhood and we wanted to make it look better. Also, property came with a few issues that, you know, Janice alluded to. Janice, would you mind moving to the next page? So for example, our house sits uh, per- perpendicular to the street and very close to the property line in the back, as you see this. Technically have pretty much no backyard. And if we look on the side, there's very little space happening kind of around the house. Everything you see kind of, our side yard is effectively our only yard that we can use. And on top of it, the front yard, uh, do you mind moving to the next slide please, Janice? Yeah, the front yard did not really look that appealing, um, so what we wanted to do is create a more uh, beautiful space for, you know, for us to enjoy and also to complement the neighborhood. So our first attempt, um, do you want to the next slide please, uh, is to plant uh, boxwoods in the front and kind of re, reset the yard overall, we, uh, we graded it, we planted um, shrubs, we planted grass to, to make it appealing, however, due to um, some difficulties with landscaping, we got uh, shrubs that, that were very slow-growing and uh, did not kind of bring the level of privacy and private enjoyment that we wanted to have as well. So our, the next attempt was to replace those bushes with uh, taller collies that we were advised that, you know, by another landscaper that this would be good, um, and provide kind of screening for the property and also uh, still maintain the green um, scape of, of the neighborhood. However, unfortunately, due to positioning of our house and the property on the street, it's pretty close to Pearl Street, which is some of you may know, it's pretty busy and we think that due to the salt that was put in the winter, the bushes effectively started dying, this is the year later that we see in the pictures, the bushes on the left, uh, completely dead and they're kind of about fifty percent of all the bushes started slowly decaying and are still in the process of decaying. So we, one of the things that, why we put in the bushes to begin with is that we want to, we see outdoor space as kind of the extension of our, of our house, right, we like to be outside. Uh, we are avid gardeners, we want to uh, grow flowers and, you know, throughout the several years that we lived here, we um shared our kind of enjoyment and flowers with our neighbors as well. And what we wanted to do is kind of be outside and interact with the neighborhood and, you know, with our anybody who uh, passes by on our terms, right, we had situations where we were in the yard and, you know, somebody who visited the town, where, you know, came by and took pictures of our house without asking us. Well, you know, we were in the yard, they probably didn't notice us behind the, the flowers. Uh, we had, you know, a few people came into our yard and brought people, other people to show them our flowers, uh, you know.
I, I don't wanna interrupt you, sir, but we really, time is of the essence, could we get to the core issue, please?
Yes, absolutely.
You know.
Uh, so what, what we wanted to do is put it like, we tried different ways and we decided that, you know, the only options we have left, that is economically feasible, is put a fence in front of our property. Unfortunately, we didn't know about the stipulation of the four-foot height fence uh, from the zoning code, otherwise we would have had this discussion without erecting the fence. And what we wanted to do is put a fence that we greenscape, uh, that we put ivy on, we trained roses uh, on top of it, as you saw from our yards, we, you know, we can do this. And to keep the green uh, escaping effect that bushes had, that all of our neighbors commented positively to, but at the same time maintain the privacy level.
Can you?
And the other side to it is.
Sir, can you, excuse me, these are the two slides, these, this is what you're proposing for the fence, the ivy and the roses would be like these?
Uh, these are just examples, right, so this clearly like I, I, we don't have ivy or roses on.
No, no, but.
But these are the type of ivy and roses we're thinking about, or some sort of greenscaping that we can.
That's what your proposal is, that you would put on the fence, something similar to these two plants here?
Yes, uh, we would greenscape the, the front of the fence facing the street.
Okay, that sounds, it's very, that's attractive.
Um, and then the secondary part that Janice mentioned is, uh, we wanted to, since the gardens are extensive and we want to keep extending them and, you know, also share the fruits of our labors with our neighbors, we want to protect them from the deer that right now pretty much demolish half the gardens every year. It's a considerable expense to us and very hard to maintain and just on the personal level, very sad to see come up in the morning to your yard and, you know, half your roses are eaten to the, to the nuts. Um, and then in addition to kind of, uh, to protect the area, we want to put these uh, gates uh, onto pedestrian side where it's like you enter the house for the, from the street and then on the right you see an example of a gate that we consider for putting on the driveway that we can close during the night and keep open during the day. Uh, just so that the deer at night don't venture in, uh, we've done some research, the deer don't like areas that are confined and they cannot see through, like, they don't like to get through that. Uh, so we think that putting kind of the fence that we have and these gates will be sufficient to um, to detract them from our property so that, you know, plants can actually have opportunity to grow.
Now, when I drove by just recently, there were, I believe, two openings.
Yeah.
This is right now, so these gates would be, I think one was for the. This is right now, so these gates would be, I think one was for the garage, or the driveway, the other was. The entranceway to the sidewalk of the house, these are where those gates would be?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, but we're still, we're still talking about a six-foot fence in the front, right? The roses and the ivy would be growing on a six-foot high fence?
Yes, yes, correct, so the, the ivy would cover the fence and then, you know, some sort of green, screen screening. And then the roses kind of trained at the top of the fence and kind of going from behind the property all over it.
So the argument is that that mitigates the six-foot high fence. This, these greenery when roses, I don't know how long it would take to fully grow, but when they were at full. Capacity, that, they would mitigate the six-foot high fence and give it some aesthetic appearance.
Yeah.
That's the argument that we're using for this reconsideration.
Yes.
Okay. All right, just, I'm glad we got there.
All right, is there more?
Well, you have questions?
I have a lot of questions.
Okay. Related to the fence, right?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, first, as a matter of, um, just, um, understanding how this all came about. Was a permit, um, was a permit, um, sought to put the fence up?
No, it's not required, Brian.
No requirement for us, for a fence?
No.
But there is a requirement with regard to, you know, with regard to the high defenses and different.
That's correct, and it's also a requirement of. If you look at the zoning code four oh five nine, nine C. The board would like me to read it, I'll read it, if not, let me know.
What do you wanna, what do you wanna point out?
Uh, fences, hedges, or garden walls for permitted residential uses shall be limited to four feet. In height in any front yard and six and a half feet in height in any rear and side yards.
Yeah, that's the issue that we have.
Right.
Giving us, it's a six-foot.
So it's, it's not just fences, it's bushes and whatever else you want to put there.
So, the part of the issue there is you have another section in your code, uh, two twenty-one dash A. That talks about fences being at least six feet in height, so I think as, as laypeople. That they, Misha and Amy tried to do the right thing, but didn't realize.
I, Miss Anderson, I, I am a zoning officer and I refer to zoning code four oh five, I know.
No, I'm just saying, if it's there, it was a mistake on their part, it wasn't.
Four oh five, and I'm not sure what you're talking about.
I, I don't think, I don't think we need to debate, the zoning enforcement officer has given an opinion that this. Front fence needs to be four feet.
I'm not, excuse me, sir, I'm not debating, what I'm answering is Mr. Cafferty's question as to why they went ahead and tried to build a six-foot fence. Without obtaining a variance in, in advance, so that makes them look bad, right, that they just went and built the fence, but they did try to look at the code.
Have any idea.
Parts of the code that suggest that.
Like, just to stop this for a second, uh, I'll stipulate to the fact that you didn't do this intentionally, okay? So we can move on?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can also just clarify for the record, there are conflicting provisions in the code with regard to the heights of fences. Um, and the definition that Eric is speaking about, or the requirements that Eric is speaking about are in the zoning code. But there are, uh, provisions with regard to fences that appear in the general sections of the code.
Dan?
Yes.
I'm shocked.
Yes, I know, we've had this discussion.
Okay, can we move along, please?
Okay, Anthony, don't worry, you're not gonna turn into a pumpkin yet.
Yeah, but.
Not yet.
We've got twenty people who wanna speak.
I, I understand, so, so, um, the fence was built and, um. The, uh. I'm just trying to, just trying to remember, um. What, uh, so, uh, is, I mean, at some point, um, in this presentation. You mentioned, um, Anthony and, and of course, the, the effort here is to try and. Uh, mitigate the fence by covering it with greenery, um. The problem, the problem with the fence, as I understand it, is that it's a stockade fence. Whether it's got greenery on it or not, it's a solid wall that's six feet high. Um, that fronts on the road, that's really the issue, so I don't. What you cover it with, it's still a six-foot wall.
Yes, it, it's, it's in violation of the zoning code.
No, I understand that, but it's, it's more than.
Considering, we're considering a variance, as we've considered variances for fences and other occasions. And, um, this is just a little different because it's the second time around because of the default denial, so. Basically, the decision's gonna be, are you gonna grant a variance for a six-foot high front fence? With ivy and roses on it.
I understand.
I, I don't think it's.
I got, I got that part. Um, I just, what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, is that I don't, I don't think is, as, as. Nice as it might look, um, you know, I don't think the issue is about trying to mitigate six feet. I think the issue is, is that it's six feet to begin with, is the issue.
Okay, well, that, that's, is the issue, and that is the dilemma that we are eventually gonna have to vote on.
I think what Brian is.
I wanna ask.
Yeah, Mary, maybe you can get him, John, just stand.
I think.
Brian, thank you.
I'm just kidding.
Thanks, Brian, thanks. What I think he's trying to say is, regardless if you put greenery, roses, or anything on it, it's still a wall that's six.
If it looks like a duck, if it walks like a duck and it sounds like.
Bingo.
We are also going to vote on this, that's why we have five board members here this evening. There may be board members among us that feel that putting greenery and roses mitigates the six-foot. I'm gathering that that doesn't make a difference for some, and that's fine, we all have our thoughts. My question is, I'd like, if I may. Put something out there for discussion purposes only with the attorney, Miss Anderson, and Mr. Corablin. Just an option, as I said, I'd like to see this get resolved amicably. Would you be willing for the board to put in a motion, and I don't even know if the board, full board, majority board would support this? Put in a, a motion. The front fence would be four feet of solid fence. With one foot on top of the four feet of crisscross lattice. The fence then would be five feet total, four feet of full board. One foot on top of the four feet as open lattice, we could put the ivy and the roses on it, the fence would be five feet. One foot lower than the current fence, but also one foot higher than zoning allows. Can we compromise and put? Four feet of a solid fence as it is now, put one foot, I think everyone understands what the crisscross lattice is, the open lattice. That would, that would make it five feet. Put the ivy, put the roses on it. And you've got your variance.
Anthony, uh, can, can I just make a point that we list, that we hear from all the other board members before we consider that option?
Well, yeah, I just making the option.
Okay, no, I'm just saying, I, I just.
I'm not ready to put a vote on it, I'm.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm trying to offer a particular option, I wanna see how the attorney and, um, Misha react to that. If they say absolutely not, that's the dead end there, we don't need to discuss it any further.
I think.
Offer solutions.
Right, and I hear what you're saying, but I agree with Mr. Cafferty, I think we wanna hear what other board members would have to say.
Well, you don't wanna hear from me?
I've, we know what your position is, and we know what your idea is, and it's not necessarily a bad one, but I'd like to, I have, we haven't heard from Mr. Martin.
Well, but I had.
On their position, or Ari on his position.
I just presented my position, I didn't, you know.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what the issue is, I'm saying I agree with Mr. Cafferty that we would want other board members.
Well, I wanna hear other board members too, I just.
Before we respond to the, the idea.
Okay, you wanna see if there's a better idea, okay?
No, we wanna know whether everyone is in, whether other people are in favor or possibly against the variance.
Okay, well.
I think we should hear from the people that are waiting to talk to us.
That's true, once you make the motion, you can have a discussion and you can further amend the motion.
I didn't make a motion, I didn't make.
I understand that, I'm saying, what I'm saying is, you hear from the public, you can make a motion, then you have a discussion on the motion.
I wanna hear if there's any more board member comment first, before we go to the public, any more comment from the board?
Well, I, can I, I just say that Brian has a good point, a solid six-foot fence on the street is pretty. Uh, the visual, you know, it's like block out everything, um, I kinda like your idea, Tony.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, it works, I have it at my house, you know, the four-foot with the little, uh, crisscross.
Yeah.
Works really nice, I don't have plants on it, but, um. Awful lot of money in plants and things, and, um, that didn't work, and maybe the fence would have been something he should have gone with. Uh, a long time ago.
Thank you, Donna, for your comment, any other comments from the board? All right.
Yeah, uh, I'll just weigh in with consideration. You know, I, I think that, uh, yeah, um, it, these are difficult decisions because there's, uh, you know, the, um, individual. There's the individual thing we're considering, and there's kind of, you know, what the, what the brother, um, uh, what the.
What?
And there goes Ari.
Sorry, we've lost Ari.
We lost Ari.
And the longer this goes on, we're gonna probably lose some more people.
You're gonna lose me shortly, cuz I got my second COVID shot today, and I'm starting to feel it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Um, so, I, what I think Ari is getting at is, is that, like, with all of our. Um, with all of our decisions that we have to make, it's, it's about understanding why this. Why this code is the, is written the way it is, and it's because we live in a city. And because we have sidewalks, which are public thoroughfares, and, you know, and I believe that. And that the.
Oh, you gotta go? Oh, connect back, okay, thanks.
He's coming back, the hospital got a whole, had a, get ahold of him.
I was, uh, just saying that the, the, uh, the, the reason why the code's written this way. Is because we live in a city, these, the sidewalks are public thoroughfares, and if we. Start to allow, um, people all over the city to start building six-foot high fences in front of their homes. Um, and I know that this is a unique sort of layout of this house, but it's still the front of the home. We're gonna, you know, we're gonna end up, you know, with a situation where if you could imagine. Washington Avenue with six-foot high fences, you'd be driving down a stockade, literally a wall, like a tunnel. And that is not what the city envisioned, and the planners envisioned when they, when they thought about this. So therein lies, therein lies the problem, um, and, and we see, we're seeing more and more of these. Uh, uh, situations with fences, um, in, in front of homes, and so it's, it's. It's, um, you know, I feel pretty strongly about this particular code. Um, and how it affects the walkability of the city and just the general, um, deal of the city. And if we start allowing people to put stockade fences up all around their houses, including in the front, it becomes. A relatively unattractive and somewhat antisocial situation, so.
All right, well spoken, Brian, very good, thank you, absolutely. Um, now, I didn't see Ari come back, which is problematic.
Here.
Okay, great, now, can I, is it, is it, um. Out of place for me to ask the attorney and the owner, the applicant? I had put a proposal out, not, I'm ready, not for a vote or anything, but is there room to maneuver on that? Vote, on that, uh, proposal that I made, the four-foot solid fence, one foot. Crisscross lattice and put the ivy and roses on a five-foot fence in the front? Is there room to amend our motion for that?
I think there's some room, um, I wanna know, would you be willing to consider a five-foot fence with lattice? Because it's still. It is a six-foot fence, but it looks, but your concern, okay, your concern was a wall, so it is less. We have some pictures of some that we could share with you, um, the, you, we still would consider the landscaping. I mean, I think if you look at this, you can see that Misha and Amy really have an eye and an understanding of beauty, I mean, I don't think there's any question about that. And I understand your comments about the city, but they do have a very uniquely situated properties. And in other uniquely situated properties, variances have been granted, right? So, we're not saying every house, it's not like it's going to affect every house.
They do have three, two sides and a rear of six feet, and they would have, with my proposal, five feet in the front. And, um, so you're telling me there's room there, but you gotta consult with your client, is that what I'm sensing?
Well, what I'm asking is whether you would even consider five feet with lattice work, or whether you're saying.
I, I would consider it, I would prefer four feet with the lattice, that's a compromise of a five feet. Like I said, one foot less than what they have right now, but one foot more than what the code allows. I think it.
I, my only, my, my, my response to that, no disrespect, but if it walks like a duck, you know.
Brian, with all due, with all due respect, I was asking the attorney and the, and her client, whether or not there was room for that. But, um, so, I think I know your position, but I was asking the attorney, is there any room to maneuver?
She asked whether we would consider a five-foot fence with a lattice, and that, that was.
She asked me if I would consider it, but go ahead, um, so.
You represent the whole board there, Anthony.
I represent me, for right now, when I speak, thank you.
You know, um, when I make, I just like to.
Go ahead, Ari, finish your comments, you can get a chance.
So, you know, I, I think my, you know, um, a concern that I have about, about this proposal, which may be different from. The precedent here and now.
Which proposal, right?
This proposal for this variance for, for this fence, uh, is that, um. For what, I, I, you know, I think of the intentions, it's clear to me that the intentions of, of, um. The, of this party is to make something very beautiful, but as we know, Kingston's an old place, and, you know. Things gonna be around for a long time, so one of the considerations about this particular six-foot fence is not what. The current owners of this house will do with it, but what this might look like in twenty, thirty, forty years. So the extent that, you know, um, shrubberies, um, lattice and, um, you know, rose bushes. Look really nice in twenty twenty-one, but, you know, circumstances change, people move. And what you might be left with, what could at one point be, you know, a relatively attractive partition. Might not be so in the future, so I, I, that kind of weighs on the decision here, you know, this is a very. Um. This is a, um.
They're allowed, Ari, they're allowed a four-foot fence.
Oh, uh, w- well aware, no, well aware.
And they're allowed the other three sides at six feet, so. That, that's a given, like geometry, that's a given, three six-foot sides and then the four, four foot. At this point, um, I do, cuz Ari's, Ari's on a tight schedule, yes, Miss Anderson?
Um, we had pictures of, um. The, uh, can I give you one second to just talk to Misha? Um, we have some pictures that we can show you, possibilities with lattice work, if you want to see them.
Well, I think, uh, I think I'm hearing from you, there's room there with the lattice, it's just a matter of the. I think we need to move to the public because we're eventually gonna have to vote on this this evening. And Ari's, um, Ari's on call and he's, uh, he's a physician and he's dedicated to the board also. And I appreciate him.
We appreciate that.
So, what I'm gonna do with the public is I'm gonna strictly adhere to two minutes. Since we have such a large number, and then board would like to get a proposal and a motion and vote on it, okay? Uh, Eric, do your thing here with the public.
Yes, so I'm gonna call on each person or each phone number individually, when you hear your name. Please unmute yourself, everybody else stay muted, and I'm gonna start with Mrs. Johnson, Gay Johnson.
Okay, two minutes.
You'd like to. Would you like to speak?
Hi, hi, my name, my name is Jess Johnson and I have resided at 145 Pearl Street for 32 years. Kingston has a zoning and a planning board that has been set in place for a reason to protect the integrity of our beautiful historic city. Our zoning laws say no street fences higher than four feet are to be constructed. No variance was requested by the owners nor the fence builders for 142, uh, Pearl Street property. One after, one hour af- after the construction was reported, a stop order was posted by the DPW zoning rules.
And that was posted by myself.
All right, let her finish, because she's, you're cutting into her two minutes there, but, uh.
The zoning rules can easily be found and neither the owner nor the fence company applied for a variance. Uh, after seeing the presentation, uh, I wonder, uh, how the flowers and the ivy will grow on, you know, on the sidewalk side if they had problems with the bushes because there's no dirt there. Uh, Kingston is a historic city and the people who live here are proud of its history. Allowing a fence of this height is setting a bad precedence.
Okay.
And I hope the zoning board will abide by the zoning laws.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Two minutes are up.
Thank you.
Much. Okay, Eric.
Okay, next person is Luciana. Would you like to speak?
Yes, yes, we, uh, we just unmuted ourselves. Alright, so it's John and Luciana. Uh, we are, we're at Pearl Street. We're directly across the street from Misha and Amy. We are perfectly fine with this fence. They do not have a front yard because of the uniquely way that this house is positioned. Like their backyard is essentially on the street. So like they, they need this fence for the privacy and we're fine with it. We're absolutely fine with it. Uh, we were, uh, it was an attempt to recruit us to speak out against Misha and we declined, uh, from another neighbor. So just saying, uh, what we are, we are absolutely fine with this. The, uh, perhaps it's, we see absolutely no wrong with, with the six foot fence at all.
All right, thank you very much. Next, Eric.
Next is Kimberly J. Scott. Mrs. Scott, Kimberly, if you would like to speak, unmute yourself. I'll give you 10 seconds. If you don't want to speak, I'm gonna move on.
I don't think she's gonna speak.
I'm gonna move on to Rachel Weiss.
Yeah, Rachel Weiss. I live at 209 Washington Avenue. Um, I continue to be opposed to this for the same reasons as I was the last time this was discussed. Namely that it is a violation of the zoning code and the privacy issue would have been evident to the owners at the time that they considered buying the property. So that's one thing. I was also struck by the statement that they want to interact with the neighborhood. And in, in all the months that this has been on the table, the owners of 142 Pearl have not approached me and I don't know if they've approached other neighbors, but they haven't interacted with me about it. And so that feels unneighborly, you know, putting it up without consulting with the zoning code and, and knowing how neighbors feel about it and still not reaching out to neighbors is problematic to me.
Okay, thank you, Rachel.
I'm moving on now to Carol Schieber. Carol, if you want to speak, unmute yourself.
Actually, it's, uh, Bill Cochran, uh, Carol Schieber's husband. Um, I, I want to point out that whether it's, um, a, a five or six foot height, it is a safety issue because it is a blind exit from that driveway. Um, this street is very busy. That property is very close to the intersection. And I firmly believe that it's gonna create a little more of a hazard, if not for just pedestrians, for drivers going up and down the street. Secondly, I want to point out that, um.
What about four feet? What about four feet? Is that gonna create a hazard?
You know, the zoning law is the zoning law, but what you can see over a four foot height is the top of a car pulling in and out of a driveway. So it wouldn't be quite as bad.
All right.
And another thing is, is that the extended, extension of, um, petitioning that was done pretty, pretty much puts it into a, a different light because the neighborhood has decided that it is detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. And the lastly is that not reaching out to their neighbor directly across the street, and we're talking about Gay Johansson, has been a problem for me because she's the one that really has spearheaded all of us talking right now more than any other person. So that was the person that needed to be talked to and she was never approached. So that's what I have to say. And then my wife also has her own comments. One second.
Hi, I'm Carol Schieber and I just want to repeat that there's a reason the code was written for this portion of our neighborhood, uh, at four feet maximum height. Um, and it's worked effectively to maintain the historic and pastoral quality of our iconic block for many years. We plainly ask that the code be respected and upheld for this particularly historic property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Eric.
Okay, we're gonna move on to a gentleman named Bill. Bill, please state your full name and address for the record. If you'd like to speak. Okay, Bill's not, Bill?
No. Hello, this is Bill Strine. I don't know how to put the camera on.
Okay, Bill, we hear you. That's okay. We can hear.
Bill, please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Bill Strine, 35 Johnston Avenue. I've had two, I've lived in Kingston 41 years, had two homes. One on Johnston Avenue, one on Wall Street, built walls for each of them. And in each case, the zoning laws were clear. We had a six foot wall. We moved it back to, uh, comply with the zoning. Everybody in, that I spoke to in the city and across the country said these are very common laws knowledgeable to everyone. Um, I think Misha's idea of mitigating the six foot wall is, is a creative one. But I'm telling you, from having planted plants, if you, if your other plants died from the salt being spit up from the street.
Yeah.
Your plants in this case are gonna die within one season. Oh, nice idea. I don't think it's gonna work. So maybe you put a contingency, if you allow any sort of variance, you put a contingency that every time the plants die, they must be replanted. Or something that holds Misha and her, and his family to the obligations that they're putting before this committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Eric?
Okay, so now we're gonna go to Barbara Cohen. Barbara, do you want to speak?
I don't, I don't think so.
Barbara, state your name and address for the record.
Hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Barbara Cohen and it's into, the reason, one of the reasons that.
Barbara, your address for the record, please.
Sure, 236 Pearl Street. So I'm a neighbor up the street, but my aunts and uncle purchased that home in the 1940s. And it was a mess when they purchased it. So the house is from the 19, from, uh, was built in 1600 and they purchased it mid whatever 1940s.
Okay, you've got two minutes, so I don't know.
Okay. The fence does not go with the house. It's an historic house. It's one of the oldest homes in the city and that fence does not, does not enhance the house at all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so now we're gonna move on to phone numbers. When I call out your phone number, because your name is not appearing on my screen, please let us know if you want to speak. I'm gonna talk to area code 917-202-8897. Do you want to speak?
Hi, yeah, that's me. Can you hear me?
Please state your name and address for the record.
Sarah Wank, 150 Main Street.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, just wanna make sure you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Um, I'm reading here from page 17 of the state ZVA area variance guideline. Um, if requesting an area variance to build in an otherwise restricted portion of the property, the state law requires the applicant to show that the benefit they receive from the variance will outweigh any burden to health, safety and welfare that may be suffered by the community. State law requires the VBA to take the following factors into consideration. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method which will be feasible for the applicant to pursue but would not require a variance. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district.
Yes, we're, we're familiar with that. Okay.
Well, I wanted everybody to hear that and I'm now gonna go back five seconds. We each live in our own homes, but we are all part of a community. To fence off a beautiful old house this way is to shut off part of that community from our shared experience, our shared past and our shared values. There are many, many places to live with more privacy. If someone chooses to buy a home on a city street with established zoning restrictions on fence height, they owe it to their community to adhere to those restrictions. And our lawmakers and those who enforce those laws owe it to our community to apply the laws fairly and above all consistently based on the well-being of the entire community they have promised to serve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Eric?
I'm moving on to area code 347-403-1257. Would you like to speak?
Okay, move on.
Area code, uh, uh, number 616-3687.
Hi, hi, sorry, I, I, I had to get back to my phone. I just didn't hear from Marvelli.
What's your name?
347, Marissa Marvelli. Did you hear me? Marissa Marvelli.
Mar- Marissa.
60 Noon Lane.
Did you get that, Eric?
Marissa.
Please repeat this. Marissa?
Yeah, yes, Marissa Marvelli, 60 Noon Lane.
60 Noon Lane.
Yes.
Gotcha.
I live.
Marvelli.
Okay, go ahead.
I live around the corner from 142 Pearl and I, I'm not gonna repeat what other, uh, people have already stated because they've made excellent points, no need to repeat them again. But I, I just want to emphasize that this fence, uh, five feet, five, you know, four feet with a lattice, five feet with a lattice, it does not promote, uh, civility at the streetscape, which is, you know, why we have the code to begin with. And the house itself is a special house, as other people have noted. Uh, it, it's situated the way it's situated because it's, you know, an old stone house. It was one of the only buildings in the, in this neighborhood for a long time. And it faces the side because it was a farmhouse. And the only way you can understand that is if there's no tall fence in front of the yard. So this is a piece of Kingston's heritage and while we don't own the house outright, we all share it and admire it together. So.
Now, you understand that, you understand.
VBA not approved. Yes.
You understand there can be a four. Okay, all right.
Four feet is fine. I ask that the VBA not approve a higher fence for this.
Thank you. Eric, go ahead.
Moving on, uh, phone number 616-3687. Would you like to speak? Unmute yourself.
No, move on.
Next caller is, uh, 481-4221. Would you like to speak?
Move on. Move on.
Uh, next caller is, uh, one, area code 132-36, wait a second. Would you like to speak? Unmute yourself.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Next caller.
Can you hear me?
Okay, yeah. Yes, we can hear you.
Carla Hart, and I live at 211 Washington Avenue. Um, um, we share a backyard, the, uh, uh, Amy and Misha and I. And, um, when they replaced the fence in my backyard, just to say, I didn't mind that they did it, but they gave me absolute no notice. No note in my mailbox, no comments. I have a large dog. The yard was open with broken debris everywhere. My dog could have bitten someone or escaped. So that was one thing. Their front yard or whatever they want to call it, a side yard, a front yard, a backyard, is at least four and a half times the size of my front yard. Um, I have a very little backyard. Um, they have a covered enclosed patio. They have a side yard. Um, I know this because my, you know, I've seen their house many times and our yards were open at one point. Um, I find it difficult to understand that they did not do any research whatsoever. Noticing that no one else had a fence, to not look up the codes. It took me about two minutes tops to look, to look them all up.
All right.
So since I'm newer to this community, am I to understand that it's acceptable to force my personal agenda upon the city of Kingston and ignore the zoning laws?
All right.
If they can do this, why can't the rest of us?
We're getting too, Eric, please mute. We're getting too critical, personal.
And now we're moving on to number 443-3358. Do you want to speak? Now, moving on to area code 212-7418378. Last caller, do you want to speak?
All right, that's it. Thank you for everybody who spoke. All right, board, it's time now. We've heard an awful lot of comments. Um, the question is, I have not made my proposal into a motion. We have a choice between a motion to grant an area variance from chapter 405-9C parentheses eight, specifically from the four foot front yard fence requirement. We have that and we could add allowing a six foot front yard fence. Or we could consider, I'm ready to.
Hello, can you hear us? We've, we've been trying to make our comments. I'm not sure if you're hearing us.
Man, man, listen.
Done, they're done, that's.
You called our phone number. Sir, you called our phone number and I'm not sure you can hear us.
All right.
Because you just figured out how to unmute yourself.
I, I unmuted myself, sir. I'm, I'm not sure what happened. I apologize. I'm pretty good with commuting, but I apologize.
Man, ma'am, two minutes, please. Two minutes.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Um, Karen Barelowitz, I'm at 190 Main Street. And I'll just make a couple of points. Um, I also strongly oppose, uh, approving this, um, this amendment and, uh, I feel that it was very obvious when the people in question purchased this house, what they were buying and that it did not come with the luxury of privacy. We all know it's a beautiful historic home. And I feel like they may not have known about the requirement against a six foot fence in the front, but what really saddens me as a, one of many people who absolutely love Kingston is that two months ago, they heard from dozens of their neighbors.
We're getting, we're getting personal now. Eric, please mute. We're done.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll make my last point. May I make my last point?
As long as it's not personal. I'm not gonna allow it personal.
Ah, I muted. You told me to mute.
I told you, we're not gonna do personal attacks. All right, so board, please.
Hello, I have one. Hello, can you hear me?
No.
Eric, you were.
I just figured out how to unmute myself. 212-7418325.
I'm calling it. The time is done. We have worked.
Hello?
Eric, mute, please.
May I speak briefly?
Yes.
Um, just quickly, I just want to address a couple of things. I mean, Misha and Amy and I have had conversations about this and part of not reaching out to their neighbors, particularly after the fact.
They don't have to answer that.
I know we don't, but they felt like, right, but they also felt like uncomfortable doing so, you know.
Those were personal attacks and I didn't allow them and we muted.
And I appreciate that.
What I, what I want to talk about is a resolution of this.
Right, well, I'm looking.
Know what your clients shared with you in terms of my proposal for the four foot high fence with one foot lattice. Can you share?
What he wanted, what he wanted to know was whether you might be able to do a, what did you say, Misha? A five foot fence with six inch lattice?
Not after what I just got done hearing from the neighbors. No. It's affecting the, it's affecting the character of the neighborhood from what I'm hearing.
Okay, but there are four other criteria that need to be considered in addition to, and, you know, and several of the people that spoke don't even live on Pearl Street.
We want to get into self-created, that type of thing, you know, they bought the house. I want to get a, a motion on the table right now. So am I to understand the four foot with the one foot lattice would not be agreeable?
Give me one second.
There's no sense passing it or not passing it if it's not gonna be agreeable and it's gonna be litigated.
Okay, so no, he's not, he doesn't think that for their purposes, the four foot fence with the one foot lattice.
We're just gonna go then with a straight motion to grant an area variance from chapter 405-9C parentheses eight, specifically from the four foot front yard fence requirement. That's the area variance that's under consideration. With a parentheses instead allowing a six foot front yard fence. Board members, did you hear what I read?
Yes.
Want me to read it again?
Please.
Motion, motion to grant an area variance from chapter 405-9C parentheses eight, specifically from the four foot front yard fence requirement, parentheses. specifically from the four-foot front yard fence requirement parentheses, instead allowing a six-foot front yard fence. That's basically keeping the fence as is and granting that area variance. Okay? Do I have a motion to consider that?
I motion.
Mary?
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Who was that, Brian?
Ari.
Ari. Okay, I'm going to take a roll call on this, okay? Mary?
Yes.
Ari? Ari?
This is.
This is.
I, I, I think the motion is a little confusing.
Okay, it's, it's not confusing. It's a motion to grant an area variant
Roll call to.
From a six-foot fence, from a four-foot front fence to a six-foot. It's, it's a very simple, Eric. It's basically allowing a six-foot front fence.
Ari had a question about it. That's why I intervened. Sorry.
Yeah.
Ari, what's the question? Ari?
No, it's fine. That's fine.
Do you want to grant?
I vote no.
No? Okay, Brian?
I, I do not want to grant the area.
Ryan?
Um, no, very distinctly no, for.
I, I, I gather that that was what it was going to be.
All the reasons I, uh, have already underscored. There are ways for them to do this with a four-foot fence and to create landscaping with inside the boundary of that fence that could provide them some privacy without creating a barricade, um, at the property line.
I got you. Donna?
No.
And Tony is a no. So motion is defeated. Um, one yes. Four no's. We have a vote of five board members as we sought out to do in the beginning of this meeting, as we said. So we have a, a motion defeated one to four, okay?
Thank you very much for taking the time to hear the application. Again, I know it was a long meeting, and it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you for your professionalism. We appreciate it, you and your client. I'm sorry, I, I hope I didn't allow any of the personal attacks to go any further than the mute button, so.
We appreciate that.
Uh, Dan, do you have anything? Dan? Dan, leave it.
I do not.
Okay. Board, I really appreciate everybody getting out tonight and having five members. Ari, I especially appreciate you taking time from your, uh, on-call there and, uh, coming. Eric, I'll see you.
No problem.
I'll see you probably in the morning.
Thank you, Tony.
As long as I'm recovered from my second shot here.
Congratulations, that's great news.
Yeah.
Thank you. Believe me, right now, I'm not feeling.
You'll be glad in two weeks when you can see your crinkits.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
Okay.
Have a good one.
And good night, all.
Bye.
Ari.
Bye. Good night.
All right, Eric, give me a call.
Okay.
How do I get out of here? Just.